The meeting of the Planning Board Borough Somerville for January 8th, 2025 will please come to order. Adequate notice of this meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act has been provided that on a copy of the notice of specifying date and time and location was put one posted on the bulletin board outside of Borough Hall, two mailed faxed or emailed to the Courier News, and three given to the Clerk Administrator. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Roll call?
The roll call would come after the...
Oh, sorry.
Yep. In the, in the real.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we have two individuals that need to take you out of office tonight, Mr. Cleveland and Mr. Addicks. You can both stand, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I'm Larry Cleveland.
To solemnly swear...
To solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States...
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of New Jersey.
And the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same...
I will bear, um, excuse me.
And to the governments...
To the governments established in the United States. To the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
I do further solemnly swear...
I do further solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully...
That I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly...
Impartially and justly.
Perform the duties of planning board member...
Perform the duties of planning board member.
Of the Borough of Somerville.
Of the Borough of Somerville.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Thank you. Welcome back.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Andrea Dare.
Here.
Chris Addicks.
Here.
Art Aikens.
Here.
Larry Cleveland.
Here.
Jason Crasker.
Here.
John Manilio is absent this evening. Mary Gallagher.
Here.
Barry Van Horn.
Here.
Councilmember Vroom. And Lisa Werner.
Here.
Okay, we are on to the election of officers.
I'll make a motion for Lisa Werner as Chair.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Crasker.
Yes.
Mary Gallagher.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
And Lisa, Lisa Werner.
Yes. And thank you, everybody.
Congratulations.
Now we need an election, nomination for Vice Chair, and I would like to nominate Jason Crasker.
I'll second that.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Mary Gallagher.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Chairperson Werner.
Yes.
And Jason Crasker.
Yes. Thank you.
Congratulations.
At least we don't have to move our seats now.
I know. Although I did like the corner. Board Secretary.
I'll make a motion for Ryan Baiki.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Crasker.
Yes.
Mary Gallagher.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Chairperson Werner.
Yes. Board Counsel.
Nominate Kara Kozinski. Motion, sorry.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Crasker.
Yes.
Mary Gallagher.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Chairperson Werner.
Yes. And final, but not least, but not last, last but not least, Board Planner and Engineer.
Motion for Mike Cole.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Crasker.
Yes.
Mary Gallagher.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Chairperson Werner.
Yes. Okay, before we go on, I just do want to, if you are here for the hearing we were supposed to have for Catherine Street, it did have to be moved. Did you want to give a little bit more of an explanation for us, Kara, please?
Yeah, there was just a little error in notice. It was indicated as Thursday, January 8th, as opposed to Wednesday, January 8th. So just to avoid any confusion, we are going to adjourn it to the next meeting of the Board. If, if that's amenable to the Board, they will have to renotice. So I will let them know when it's adjourned too. So if you're going to tell me that it's the next meeting, then that's what I'll tell them. And that next meeting will be...
Going to be a Wednesday. Wednesday, the 22nd.
Yeah, Wednesday, the 22nd.
So, sir, are you here for the Catherine Street? Okay. So they will be renoting. You will get a new notice. The only caveat to that is I'm assuming that they'll be able to publish in time for that date.
And they'll be available for that date.
And that they'll be available.
Yeah.
I just don't know what the publication requirements are for the newspaper, so hopefully, because it is 10 days before, so they'd have to get it published by Sunday.
Okay.
So, you know, as of right now, the Board's going to adjourn it. You'll get a new notice either way, but as of right now, it will be scheduled for the 22nd.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for coming out.
Okay, resolutions. Can we do these all at once?
Just to say, I think we can, unless anybody has an issue with any of them, we could pull one out. But other than that, Kevin, I think you're okay to do them all.
Yeah, they could be on the consent, provided there's no dissenting votes.
Everybody okay with that? We're going to do them all at once?
I'll make a motion to move 250108001 through 005.
Second.
Andrea Dare.
Yes.
Chris Addicks.
Yes.
Art Aikens.
Yes.
Larry Cleveland.
Yes.
Jason Crasker.
Yes.
Mary Gallagher.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Chairperson Werner.
Yes. All right, now we have a resolution for the Route 22 dispensary.
So moved.
Second.
So that was Jason moved, Mary Gallagher seconded. And Kevin, you have the eligible message on the resolution?
I do not, no.
Okay. Ms. Werner?
Yes.
Mary Gallagher.
Yes.
Councilmember Vroom.
Yes.
Jason Crasker.
Yes.
Mr. Cleveland.
Yes.
Mr. Addicks.
Yes.
Barry Van Horn.
Yes.
Mr. Aikens.
Yes.
All right, we are moving on to our discussion items. First on is the EV charging, some existing and proposed code and regulations. We discussed this. We wanted to really start to look at this this year. So Mike, put this together. Mike, if you want to go through, kind of lay out what you did so far.
Yeah, thank you. What we have here is the first page is all the code changes which are happening on the construction level. And the code changes are basically going to be making all decks sprinklered, and there's weight issues, and there's charging regulations on the construction side. So on the construction side, in the State of New Jersey, is governed by the UCC codes. So the Board really can't overstep and talk about sprinklers and, you know, extra safety things that what the codes require. From a land use perspective, however, the Board can say, to the extent possible, that the chargers have to be outside, not in the structure. And I say to the extent possible because the legislation from the state says for new parking lots, you're going to put these chargers in. So if you have a situation where it's all underground parking, the Board really has no choice but to allow the charging underground. But you can look at it from a perspective of fire lanes, access to the front.
So more, more of a location, we're restricted to location definition there, but not that it can't.
The state is saying on new parking lots, you have to provide this.
New parking decks.
New parking lots.
Every, any type of parking.
Now, I would love to say you can't put it on the structure, period. But in that unique situation where there's no surface parking lots, you're going to be running a foul, on my opinion, of the state regs, that says that you have to provide this. We, no, we've had the luxury, I say we, the Borough, that there's always been some surface parking lots. So in case by cases, we like on 50 James, we dedicated them to be on the surface parking lot, so they're not in the, in the structure. And I think that works as long as there's availability of surface parking somewhere.
So if they have a deck, there is no surface parking, they have a deck, we could, we could require them to put the EV charging on the top and not in, sandwiched in a level.
And we can look at stamp pipe locations just from a circulation, so that from an OEM perspective. The actual sprinklers and all that would be dictated by the code. However, the siding, I think, to a, to a certain extent, the Board, the Borough has some control over that.
Which is, I just see it inherently conflicting between NFPA and the state. Put in sprinklers, the sprinklers can't put these fires out.
No.
Yeah.
A fire hose can't put the fires out.
No.
It makes no sense.
And, and one of the things we could consider too, you know, in drafting something, you could make a requirement that the EV charging must be outside. Okay, so then whether outside is on the top of the deck, in surface parking somewhere, and if they're, if their design doesn't allow for that, then they have to get a, would be a design waiver or a variance? I would say it's a variance at that point.
It would be a variance.
Because it would be a location, which, you know, I, I wouldn't think you'd want to grant, but at least then it gives them the option to make surface or put it on the top of the deck.
Top of the deck.
We're having the situation where the International Residential Code now requires for one and two family structures, it's number five from page one, first page, that's requiring a receptacle for level two charging in the garages, should you have garages.
In your garage.
In the garage.
Just a receptacle, though.
The receptacle, so you could plug a level two charger, so in theory, you could charge an EV in the structure.
Makes no sense.
Now that's...
Hopefully, hopefully you're... Hopefully, you're running your cable out of your garage and charging in the driveway, but there's no...
That code is now being enforced by the New Jersey UCC, so it's not a future code. That's the current code for one and two family dwellings as we speak. Now, I'm, I share the concern. So on a different application, a different Board, I, in the review memo, I said, please put the receptacle closest to the garage door, which we're encouraged, charging in the driveway, not the structure. So we have some hurdles that we have to deal with, that, not to go and foul with the construction.
Go ahead, Larry.
I was going to say, this also talk or speaks to the state requirement of the 15% and then the growth that needs to be...
That's the make-ready spaces. You have the reduction.
Still having the same problem.
We're, we're, you have a mandate from the state saying, to every municipality, and I think Kevin adopted, Borough adopted this last year or two years ago when it came out, because the Borough had no choice. The, the legislation said each Borough will adopt the standards being on new parking facilities, you will have these make-ready parking spaces in. So you have a mandate saying you have to address the EV, and then you have all the codes saying you need sprinkler, the codes are tightening up because of the fire hazards, which we all know about. It's not the fire, it says you can't put them out effectively. They burn, and they damage structures, they damage properties, public health.
Cars around them.
Let me, let me ask this, because going back to your outside, you know, we can make an ordinance saying it's got to be outside of the deck. Nothing says we, and correct me if I'm wrong, nothing says we have to allow them in a deck, that we have to allow a parking deck without outside spaces. I mean, there's codes that say in a 100-story high-rise building, you have to have mass notification. We don't allow 100-story buildings, so we don't have to worry about that. What if we have an ordinance that just says, no, that the Borough will not allow any EV charging stations in a parking deck?
I don't think we can, because that would override the ordinance of states that it has to be, so what, to the point of saying it has to be outside, then it would have to be at the top level, right? And if they can't meet that, okay, then now to Kara's point, now that becomes a variance. So they would have to come before this Board to, to clarify how they're going to, or why, what their reason is that they can't meet this.
Yes, I, I guess what I was trying to twist it into is, let's say somebody wanted to do a parking deck, could we require that they just got an additional piece of space addition, you know, adjacent to it and put their 5'8" spaces outside of it?
I think we'd be tipping the line. I think we're, we're dabbing our, our feet above, at that line where we would be overstepping our authority.
And I think you could accomplish the same thing by just saying it has to be outside. Now, I like the fact that it would be a separate area, because it wouldn't be on top of the building.
I can't imagine them trying to fight a EV fire on top of a parking garage either.
Correct. But I think saying, because, and I want to look to see exactly what, you know, how that's worded, but it says, the way Mike has it here, requires sprinkler systems in all parking garages over 48,000 square feet. So does that mean that they have to have a certain number for those parking garages? So like, I, I don't know what the implementation of that is. I'm going to look at that.
What, how it works right now is if you have an open parking structure, being that's a percentage, you have knee walls, and it's open, you don't have to sprinkler per current, current codes. The enclosed decks, garage have to be sprinkled by code. So what the change is, is the national codes are saying, square footage, but another code says, I don't care if it's a deck, with the exception of one and two family, you're going to put sprinklers in. The sprinklers is an attempt to try to contain it, not, not put it out, just try to contain it to minimize public health and damages to property. It's my opinion.
That's all it's going to do.
That's all it's going to do.
The other one is, yeah, the other one is EV charging spaces in new parking facilities. So to Jason's point, can we say parking facilities, you know, it does the, does the outside satisfy it? Can we say if you can't be on an exterior portion of a parking facility, it has to be on a surface lot? I mean, we can, we can look at that, but I think the location is really your only way...
Right.
To accomplish what you're looking for and not run afoul of the requirements.
Would it be wise for us, i.e. you, Mike, to reach out to the Division of Fire and see if they have any guidance that they can provide to us?
Yes, I can certainly do that.
You know, because that, that gives us some teeth then, as well.
We can't be the only ones worried about this.
Exactly.
We're not.
The only thing we hear is that the fires are nightmares.
Some municipalities have just prohibited them in decks, period.
My, yeah, my, my office on my day-to-day job has been, it, a lot in the last eight, 10 weeks, and especially this week, obviously, after what happened on, on New Year's Day. They've been reaching out, saying, what can we do to restrict this? And, and I've told them the same thing, listen, you got to go back and look at the codes, and then it has to be a local issue. There is nothing that we can do out of our office, even though we respond to it. There is nothing that we can offer. But we have been supplying data on what has happened so far within the county.
Yeah.
And the, really, the issue is, is it really is a public safety nightmare. It truly, like, there's no way around that, and it's about how can we minimize that. I like the idea of what you're saying. I'm just afraid of pushing ourselves to a point where are we overstepping by saying, no, we're not going to allow it on a deck? And then what if we have some kind of applicant just saying that where there is no possibility where they're going, where there could be any other surface parking?
Well, I also think we have to couch it. So I think it's also not only a conversation with Division of Fire, it's a conversation with Bobby Lynn and the Board of Engineers from our capability, our response capability standpoint. If we have a parking deck, how can you respond?
And they get up there.
Yeah, can, can we put a fire out, an EV charging fire out, if it's at a top level? If it's in? And this way, we have backup data that supports anything that we do.
Yeah.
And I think you have to couch it in, what is our capability to fight a fire like that? And Roger can probably speak better to, to that, and Barry as well. You know, we, we can't just be, okay, well, you can put it on the top deck. If we can't get up there, I mean, we've got a, a smaller vehicle, but does that vehicle have the capability to put a fire out on the top deck? An EV fire? Was it purposed for an EV fire? No. So, you know, that, that, we need that.
Yeah, I guess what we're saying is, it's the least desirable to put EV charging in the deck. That's what we're all saying here.
Yes.
And should that happen, then we're looking at ways to minimize the risk. That's all what we're saying. So drilling down on those two items, seeing what Division of Fire Safety says on the state level, and then looking to manage the risk in the deck by getting feedback from Fire Marshal, from the Board of Engineers.
Yeah.
And those who actually deal with this, they come up with recommendations. If it has to go in the deck, is it better off right next to the door so you can pull the vehicle out with a cable, maybe? Or can you, these items, we get some experts to try and...
Or if that creates its own fire hazard, locking the entrance or exit of the parking deck itself.
So one of the other things you have to think about too, when it comes to the response aspect, so you have the one portion where you're actually trying to put it out, okay, right? Which starts with the firefighters. Once hazmat gets there, that vehicle has to be towed out. There's no other way around that. So to Brian's point, on a top deck, that might be your difficulty is because the way it has to be removed. It's not just a typical tow when we're moving these vehicles.
Just another quick point too about the top of the deck. A lot of these lithium-ion batteries, when they burn, they produce like a magma, like flammable liquid. Every single surface in a parking deck is sloped. So if you have a fire on the top level of the deck, you have a flammable liquid traveling down the entire deck, potentially burning every other car on its way, so.
And it burns so hot that it's actually melted the concrete, put holes in deck floors. It's been documented. Holes below the fire, but it's so hot.
How can they even make this requirement? I, I'm just like, Ford, sorry.
I've seen stranger things, but again, that's unfortunately just, I, I, in my opinion, it's the wrong people making those decisions. They didn't do it with any data, they just did it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we should drill down with the Fire, Division of Fire Safety, and get the experts and craft something. In the worst-case scenario, we have to put the EV charging in the structure, underground structure.
But I think you also, to Jason's point, I think we do explore, is there a way that we can totally restrict it with some other offerings, so that we're not, we're not saying you can't have charging stations, we're just saying we're not allowing it in the deck, you have to come up with an alternative on that.
Yeah, so...
It's still one parking area, and if you took a block and you said, we're, we're going to put a parking deck here. Well, if you, if you shrink the deck by 20 feet and you put 30 spaces outside of it, that's still all one parking facility, I would consider.
And, and that's why I want to know what that, how that's looked at, that word parking facility.
So we don't have to allow it, in, in that case, if I'm right.
It could be on the outside.
It could be on the outside at least, and I think that would be a step in there.
Yeah, there, there's also a National Parking Association, I don't know if it's called that, but I think maybe a, maybe a quick Google search and looking on their website and, and reaching out to them, because this is something that I'm sure that, you know, when they're building decks all over the country, that they're, they've already dealt with. And are there fire protection measures that can then be built in when these things are being built?
Uh huh.
That would have that capability to, to suppress it maybe a little bit better. I, I don't know.
Right.
But we're not the first ones. So I think it's, it's going to take a little bit of research.
Are these regulations from the state or from us going to be retroactive, that an existing deck has to upgrade?
We can't do that.
So grandfather is going to be...
There's been some guidance from DCA that existing parking lots are not covered. So there's a parking lot there, and you have some development. You can't mandate EV because the parking lot's there.
Do, are, do any of our current decks have, I don't think we...
EV?
Yeah, I don't think they did. I don't think Morris's did. I know DeSavio's doesn't. Like, I don't think any of the current decks do.
No, no.
So we're, we're lucky in that sense, because I know there's decks going around the county right now that have them in it, so we're lucky.
They're, they're, correct me if I'm wrong, yeah.
Oh, here.
Oh, here they do.
Yep.
We're a little in front of the curve, even if we can get it right, but they're on the ground floor.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the only thing that's been shown to have any kind of combat are the blankets.
Yep.
Right. And they're $3,500 apiece.
Yes, I know. I just purchased 10 of them.
Right. So then, then does that become a piece where we, you know?
Yes.
They have to, in, one of the things you have to have is you, if you're going to have them, if we can't bar it and there's no other alternative, maybe one of the things we look at, going back to suppression, is you have to, you have to have them accessible. That way, if we come as the fire department...
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah.
They're there, you can just take them out of the box.
But we couch that...
You wouldn't leave something like that in a wall. You would, you would have to be with the fire department.
But you couch that, that it's for the OEM, not a structural element.
Right.
It would be for the purpose of facilitating OEM fire to, to facilitate putting the fire out or addressing the hazard.
Because that would, that would eat up FD's budget real quick.
Yeah.
And I would definitely recommend, you know, engage county hazmat, because they are the ones that have to ultimately respond, and they work with the fire department. And they can also add to that in the sense of thought processes, of ways that you could to, you know, kind of like the ideas that he just brought up. There's, there's, are other ways that you, and stipulations you can put in there, because it's not, the, the issue is, once you finally get it out the disposal, and, you know, we take, we take the batteries, we have to take most of them, but even that, they reignite on a continuous basis. My grounds are constantly on fire. No pun intended. But, so, those are the things, and that's why it's such, the, the way that they remove the vehicle at times is, is done the way it's done, too.
So get input from others, from higher authorities, from OEM, from Board of Engineers, and come back to the Board with additional information, that creative thinking to address these from a OEM standpoint, to stay away from the structural UCC comments.
And see, see what others are doing.
Right.
That's, you know, we're, we're not the first.
Yes.
All right, the second item for discussion was our lot coverage. This is something newer that has come up. Mike, you want to kick this off? You want me to kick it off?
Elisa, just quickly.
Yeah, yep.
Anyone else here for Catherine Street, maybe? Are you here for Catherine Street tonight?
Okay.
Okay.
Awesome.
Yeah, real quick, thank you. There's been some discussion that maybe the impervious surface definition, it needs to be revised to add more flexibility, the theme being to add more flexibility to the land use, similar to corner lots, to, to address some of these houses and undersized lots, to give property owners more flexibility without going to a Board. That's the overall theme.
Yeah.
And one of the driving instances here for board actions is the impervious or improvement coverage. It's, improvement coverage covers everything, and if you're over the limit, you have to go to a board. So I think what's saying here is, if, if the planning board would like to look at these definitions, then maybe add some more creativity or flexibility into the definitions and/or the bulk standards. And it would be Schedule B and C, C's the parking, C's the bulk standards, on the improve, it would be the improvement coverage.
And I do, yeah, so I, I want to give some also, you know, historical tiers. So one of the reasons that we decided that we really needed to look at this is, we, we have a lot of properties in town that, you know, we always use the term grandfather, right? So they're good as is, and then they want to make an improvement to their property, and now they're strapped because they were built and everything was done so long ago. And we've kind of done that. So I think it's time that we really look at what, what restrictions do we want to maintain? Or what, how, what, what items do we want to actually look at and say, you know what, this doesn't make sense in this area anymore? They shouldn't, it shouldn't really be, so where are those exceptions? And how do we put those exceptions in place? So that we can allow residents and business owners to continually improve their pro, their property the way that they would want to improve their property, without also, you know, obviously just opening up the floodgates and saying, oh, anything's possible, so.
So in the past, we've had, the planning board has designated a subcommittee to look at the standards. I don't know if that's where the board wants to go. We last looked at this, I want to say in '09 and '10.
It was a while ago.
And there was flexibility, an extra five percent was put in the ordinance for improvement coverage if you got the stormwater of the street. So if that's the, I'm just giving you an example of what was done in the past with the subcommittees. The, the board, the planning board would like to do a subcommittee. If not, we can certainly address it in the board level.
No, I think a subcommittee, so that we can keep moving on it and we're not constantly waiting. And, and, and then, you know, really, I, I don't want it to, this isn't one that should be a heavy lift, let's put it that way. And a subcommittee, I think, can review this over the next week, couple of weeks, few weeks, month, and really bring back some good recommendations that we can move on faster, sooner rather than later. And I think to this point, it's a portion of stuff that we're going to already, we already said in '25, we wanted to begin to look at, you know, whether it's, you know, in our zoning or anything. But I think this is a good start and an easy lift. I don't think this is a heavy lift for most people. How do we go about, do we have to designate that subcommittee now, or?
I think, yeah, I would, I would just ask for volunteers, who wants to?
All right, who wants to be on the subcommittee?
If not, you'll appoint them.
I will volunteer you.
Volunteer.
I'll tell you. Thank you, Larry.
Larry, Richard, that's what I think is a great.
Yeah.
Well, how many people you want on it?
I, I mean.
Not a majority.
Yeah, so what, three?
Three, four tops.
Andrea, anybody else?
I think John, John, is that?
Hey, that's what he gets for missing the meeting, John.
I just heard that, I'm not positive. This is why you don't miss meetings.
Yep, anybody else?
Does, does the committee have to be limited to members of the, of the planning board?
I mean, technically, no.
The, the only reason I, I raise that chair is because we struggle with, by the way, the ordinance is difficult enough, because, you know, everything's assumed that, that it covers land. Other, I mean, if we don't know what it is, it's assumed that it covers land. So the staff does struggle with it, so I always suggest the zoning officer or myself participate and try to move the subcommittee along.
Yeah, why don't we automatically do that?
And we can kind of do that, whether it's, you know, I, I know the mayor does not like the electronic meetings, but, but sometimes in order to move things along, it'll help, and we could do that. I'd be happy to volunteer and volunteer the zoning officer as well to, to, you know, to participate in that.
I think that's a good idea, especially to help keep moving along. And there may be questions from a perspective of any of the planning board members, that having the zoning officer and you on there.
That's good.
Anybody else for this third spot?
I, I heard.
John, Matt?
John.
Larry and Andrea.
Oh, Larry too, sorry.
Larry, Andrea, and John.
Okay.
Good.
All right. So the only thing I would say for the subcommittee is, you know, at least have some kind of update for the next meeting so we can keep moving it along, whether you're at where you need to be, but I don't want it to get dropped. So we'll add it as, as an open item for the agendas, so that we can keep making sure. In case if, and if there are questions or concerns being brought back to the board, so that we can move through that.
And obviously, give me a call, email, if you want me to be on a, whatever you want, just let me know.
All right, we're on to my comments. I don't really have many comments, except Happy New Year, everybody, and thank you again for entrusting me to be your chair. I am honored. This year, I really hope that we can continue to start to hit some of those points that we've wanted to hit over the last few years. I think this is a great start with the lot coverage, really starting to narrow that down, even addressing this EV charging station. I think we have some great opportunity this year to touch things that have been affecting the borough for a very long time and really get them moving forward to better, one, for public safety for our residents, but also for, you know, better living and better in ease for our residents who are trying to improve things, you know, in this wonderful square awesomeness of two-point-five miles. So that's all I have. I'm going to open up the meeting to the public for any comments. I just ask if you can come up to the microphone, state your name and address, please.
Make sure you turn the mic on.
Is that working?
Yep.
Okay, good. Good evening. My name is Jeff Lamborn, the current and, I guess, soon-to-be departing chair from the Environmental Commission. New chair is behind me here. Jeff Lamborn, a thirty-two listed terrace here in Somerville, thanks. I had a, a couple of questions. I haven't had the chance to sit, talk with anybody from the planning board directly at a meeting outside of Larry, we typically meet with, and everything that we disseminate, he disseminates to you guys, which is great. We appreciate you having him be appointed for the board, to come and join us on our commission anytime. I, I have, I guess, three things I want to mention. The first one is probably just advisory. The Environmental Commission has put together a list of recommended street trees for use in our town here. I'm sure many of you are aware of that. If there's a way to encourage those trees, and especially the caliber size that those trees are being used for development projects, larger site plan applications, I think it would, we, as the Environmental Commission, believe that that would be most beneficial to match character within town. I, I think an instance that I can point out well would be, one that we see visually downtown, is the edge properties. Those two properties in particular, and perhaps where Salted Lime is located. Those trees we find to be really smaller in stature and not appropriate for the size. We think that can be there for the benefits that the trees have. It's a very, there's a lot of items to that that can be getting into, but it's our opinion, let's pick some trees that are a little bigger for the application. So I wanted to express that to you guys, and, and we can furnish that list.
If I may?
Yeah.
I, so I think that, so you're done selecting what you thought trees?
Yeah, I think we're, we got it there.
What I would suggest is bring that back to this board.
Okay.
Make a presentation, show them the trees, because the, this board has always had a hand in helping to define what those trees are.
Yeah.
And I think it would be great to bring those trees to, to, to the board.
Okay, certain, certainly. I think most of those trees that I'm thinking of or referencing are really more Main Street, like downtown trees, ones that have heavy foot traffic and, and other traffic and, and everything else that goes along with it. It's hard to grow a tree in that, in that environment. But we also do have a list that kind of reflects more of the suburban tree, trees that kind of stretch around town. So we get a, a nice budget through, I think what the planning board does is have the applicants put some money in a fund when they can't put trees based on the lot that they're going to improve upon into a fund. Every year, we put about a dozen, maybe two dozen trees across the town. To give you an idea, we have sixteen this past year we put in, and there's a backlog of forty-eight other applicants in town, residents that want trees on their properties too. So it's a nice thing to have to do, so thank you guys for making that happen. Second item I wanted to bring up is a, a proposal. So the Environmental Commission Chair in Tewksbury recommended this for all, I guess, all planning boards, but it's a, a green development checklist, where if they propose development project such as a subdivision or something that requires site plan or a variance, it's a checklist that the applicant would go through. And as much of anything, information, what, to be done with the information, I think, is something we'd like to work on in, in the commission. But it's the idea of, does a development include or increase land-type uses such as agricultural forest, wetlands, waterways, and bits about how it's constructed. This is something I have a digital copy of, happy to share, I can leave the paper copy here as well. The idea is, it's based on LEED system standards for buildings and neighborhood development, as well as what we participate in is what's known as Sustainable Jersey, which is kind of a best practices list for what, what can be done for a development. So is there, I, I know, obviously, there's a whole lot of things that any applicant has to go for, or provide and, and information. Does this fit into something that you guys have already? Where, where can this work?
I, I don't know, I, I haven't seen it, so I, I wouldn't. I think it's something that the board would have to review.
Yeah, I think if you can send it to the boards, our board secretary
Yeah.
digitally, and then he can get it distributed to us, and then we can take a look at it for you, absolutely.
Certainly, okay, thanks, we appreciate that. And then I think the third item is a question of where to find the agenda for, for the meeting here tonight. Larry did me a favor and forwarded it to me, but when I went on the website, I wasn't sure where I could find it. Where can I find the agenda for a meeting that's happening the day of?
So it, it'll typically be right online, if you go under the board on the website. The board secretary's been sick for the last week or so.
Oh, okay.
So there was some confusion, and it didn't get posted, unfortunately.
But normally, it is always there.
It, it will typically be posted on there with a link to the video that you're spotlighting on right now.
Streaming on today.
Yes.
But yeah, it will be right under there, if you go under the Boards and Commissions, and go to the Planning Board, or under Meetings, you can get to it either which way.
Thanks, I think I found where it was supposed to be. I haven't seen it checking in the meeting tonight, so like you said, your secretary's ill, it happens, I understand. But if, it's something that I've heard other people mention, so we'd like to know what the agenda is, is going on. I think a lot, I don't know how many people tune in to stream on these, but it's just nice to have it, so, and I think a requirement too.
Yeah, it is a requirement.
It absolutely is a requirement.
So, thank you, I think that's everything I have. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else from the public? Okay, closing public session. Any last-minute alibis before I, okay, I have my motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All opposed?